Good afternoon, I think it's four o'clock according to my clock here. So, welcome everyone to our school board retreat, I'm calling the meeting to order. The school board of the city of Manassas is holding a special meeting, a budget work session. Please note that the meeting will be conducted virtually as authorized by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3708.2A3 due to restrictions on public gatherings issued by the state and federal government. We'll start off the meeting with a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please, Mrs. Garza.
Chairman Williams. Vice Chair, woman Keith. Mr. Rattler, Maria.
Here.
Mr. Albrecht.
Here.
Mrs. Seabird.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mrs. Stevens.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Garza, and thank you all for being here, especially moving the meeting at the last minute. I apologize again for that, and I appreciate you all coming around and coming to the meeting today, even though it was moved around in the last minute, so thank you for that. Generally, at our retreat, we have a welcome and talk about, you know, the school year and other things, but this is kind of a strange year. Our first virtual retreat, hopefully it goes well, hopefully it's the last virtual retreat we have to have. But I know we have lots of stuff to do today, so I won't talk too long, I will just go right into the agenda. The second item on the agenda is department reports, so I will turn it over to Dr. Newman and his team.
Thank you Chairman Williams, and welcome to the board. Our 2020 retreat. Talked to Chairman Williams about preparing for this meeting, so each of the cabinet members will answer three questions about their department, and that is, what has each department accomplished during this year that they're proud of? What areas can each department improve on? And then the last question is how are the departments going to address the pandemic in the fall? The order of presentations is Communications, Ms. Radford, Technology, Mr. Barrett, HR, Ms. Wingfield, Student Services, Dr. Stone, Student Achievement, Dr. Saunders, and then we'll finish with Mr. Hawkins with Finance. I will say a couple of words after Mr. Hawkins, depending on time. And then at that point, we will open up the floor for board member question and comment. When I was talking to Chairman Williams, we thought it was best to wait for the questions at the end because some of the cabinet reports will go together and we may answer those questions that you may have. So due to respect for time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Radford.
Good afternoon, everyone, can you hear me? Yes, okay, good, all right, well, I am coming to you this afternoon on behalf of the Department of Communications under the superintendent's department. And we've had an interesting year, just like everybody else, of course, you know, to have to go through this change so abruptly, but I am very happy that I was able to add two new people to my department this year. Amber Malavies, who is the Assistant to the Public Communications Director. And she is fabulous, she came to us from Randolph-Macon College, I mean, I'm sorry, VCU, she went to VCU, and she had some magazine experience and things like that, but she's an excellent writer, very good with social media, so she's done a great job keeping us on top of those things. She specializes in photography, so if you've seen any of our great photo albums, the galleries that are being featured on our Facebook page, we get a lot of compliments on those, so I'm very happy to have her as a part of our team. And then we were able to add Deneen Clary to assist with the receptionist duties. This year, we chose to split that into two, back to two people the way it was several years ago, just because it was getting harder to manage lunches and things like that with just one person there, having to pull from other departments and things like that. So this has proven to be much more efficient for our space over there. Our coverage has been great, and the engagement with the public has increased a lot, which really leads to one of the areas that I'm very happy about because we had some apathy, I guess you would say, to some degree with Let's Talk and that platform and working with K-12 Insight to try to present it in a manner that we were all comfortable with. And from last year to this year, we've seen an increase, certainly because of the closure that probably added to it a lot, especially at the high school level with the questions that parents had about seniors and things like that. But I'm very happy about the engagement that I'm seeing from the principals because if I look at last year's numbers, we had about an 8.2 feedback out of 10 from last year, the average, and then this year, our average was 9.1. So that, of course, is the times that people will take to submit their customer service feedback back to us. And we had 532 dialogues so far this school year. And from talking to K-12 Insight, they've given us a profile and they've said that we are above the national average on the reports back about people feeling good about customer service and the response times that they're getting things back from the principals. Real quickly, last year, the average age of one of our dialogues was 3.2 days, and this year, the average has been 2.5. So principals and directors, everybody that has access to it, we're getting to those people much quicker, and so that helps with efficiency and for people to feel that their issues were being addressed in a timely manner. So, other than that, you know, we definitely have to support, I mean, that's our role, we support other departments. We didn't add a new platform or anything this school year. However, we are looking, our website template was established in around 2015. And so because of accessibility, because of landscape, you know, trying to find areas to put recurring information and things like that, we are working with our provider to do a refresh this year. And so I spoke with Andy Hawkins about being able to do that, and I'll work with the schools, try to make it as easy as possible because there's never a good time, we can say summer, we can say fall, we can say spring, but there's never really a good time to do an overhaul. But because I have Amber with me now, we should be able to ease some of the burden off of the schools and especially during this time of teleworking, that will be beneficial to us as well. And then besides that, I think one of the things, or one of the areas that we feel we need to see an increase in, and that's the newspapers, the online reporters and things like that because, you know, of course, there's been a death to printed papers, and we lost the Manassas Observer, which was one of our biggest ways to put things out. And so she's just focusing on the bull run side of her newspaper. But a lot of times, it's, you know, once we get it out to them, it's just that, all of that follow-up to try to get them to care about the issues in the city of Manassas because we understand that we're competing against primarily Prince William, you know, for coverage and space. So we're going to try to do a little bit more to meet with some of the reporters, to bring them inside. Dr. Newman had done some outreach with Channel 7 last school year, and they have been following up with us, wanting to cover some more positive stories. So we're hoping that we'll have a good spring board for that coming into the next school year. And then finally, like I said, the transition back to the building will kind of be predicated on how we open up to the public, because right now, if we are still closed, it would not be feasible for me to bring our receptionist in to engage with anyone coming in and out of the building at this time. Amber and I are doing a very good job of teleworking with each other, and when the time comes that we need to have face-to-face or the building is available for us to come in and do more collaborative work in person, we'll certainly do that. But I think bringing the receptionist back in will just kind of lean more towards whatever happens with the health regulations and what we decide to do as a district when people can start visiting. That's it.
All right, we'll go to our next question, Mr. Barrett.
Thank you, Dr. Newman. Afternoon, board members. So as I reflected on the three areas that we were asked to look at, I look back at our accomplishments, I hope everybody can hear me. One of the things we did was restructure the IT team. If you recall about this, well, almost this time last year, we worked to get a security engineer position included in the budget. Unfortunately, we were not able to find somebody to fill that position, it's a competitive market. We tried a couple of occasions to get somebody in there, but we weren't able to. So one of the things as we did is we looked inwardly to figure out how best we can utilize our existing resources. And so we kind of restructured the IT team just a little bit over the course of the year. We reduced one position, a telecommunications engineer, as many of the duties of that have now morphed into more of a network engineering role. And so we changed that to a network engineer position, which will be effective on July 1. And then we repurposed the security engineer position to a second senior T-spec, our technology support specialist position. We had one for the longest time, in addition to the six school-based T-specs. What this will do, it will allow us to give more senior leadership and oversight to those T-specs, a lot more out in the field with them. Also gives somewhat of a career ladder for our regular T-spec position, something to grow into as a senior. But overall, and looking at all these changes, what it allows us to do is shift a bunch of the roles around. Specifically, security, we're going to take a multi-team approach, that'll be spread out between my position, the coordinator position, and our two network engineers. And then some of the telecom functions are going to be given to the senior T-spec roles. So that's, those are big changes. We were able to hire our second senior T-spec just before the pandemic hit, and our regular T-spec to fill that position, as we promoted, ended up promoting somebody inside. That person starts on July 1. And then we're currently getting ready to interview for the network engineer position. In terms of infrastructure projects, our massive project that took about the course of a year was to replace our firewall infrastructure. So that is kind of the head end, if you will, of the MCPS network. And in doing so, we also collapsed the internet content filter, which was a separate system, and brought that all into one device, one infrastructure. That took a couple of months of implementation and getting it really up to speed. A lot of that work was done over the winter break. When students came back to school and teachers came back in January, we had that up and running, and it was live. And so we used the couple of months that we had with staff and students in the building to continue to fine-tune it. And we're going to take another leap forward, and I'll share with you in a minute how we're going to do it going forward. We replaced Dean's network infrastructure last summer, late last summer, repurposing a bunch of network equipment that we had on hand, if you will. Didn't spend a ton of money, but it was, it's a much better improvement than it was. And at the same time, we also upgraded all of the elementary schools, except for Baldwin Elementary, because we did that when we built it, their wireless networks to the latest and greatest wireless standards. And in doing that, we also increased the density. Our standard had been to put an access point in every other classroom, but with us to continually deploy more and more devices, we ended up putting one in every single classroom. So effectively kind of doubling our density and our capacity. We started a mass replacement of our Cisco desktop telephones. At, we did Central Office and we did Baldwin. In March, we had just received the shipment of phones for Metz Middle School. To do that replacement has since been on hold, but we have identified funding in our CIP budget to replace all of the Cisco telephones within the entire division. Our phone's system has been upgraded, but the telephones themselves were eight to 10 years old. And so we were at the point where we could no longer upgrade our phone system without upgrading the phones. And so we've been working on that. One of the big things was is that we became fully one-to-one with our computer-to-student ratio this school year in grades one through 12. Through interaction with curriculum instruction and their leadership, we determined a two-to-one ratio was best for an actual laptop device at the pre-K and kindergarten levels. We use a smaller 11-inch device for there, but they also had the added benefit of using the iPads that they already had. So we were effectively one-to-one pre-K all the way to 12 this year. Those are kind of the highlights of our major accomplishments this year, some things we can improve on, especially with our two senior T-specs now. One of the things I wanted to focus on is the relationship with some of our key stakeholder groups. Our instructional technology counterparts want to build better working relationships with them and the folks at each school, so we can better understand the technical needs of our staff and our students, communicate in the same language. A lot of the time, we talk highly technical jargon sometimes, it goes over folks' head, but help, just to have a common vocabulary with those relationships. And then also, we want to streamline more of our support processes. We're already starting to do that through some cellphone changes, our mobile device management that takes over the iPads, our paging and clock systems, we're looking for efficiencies on that, those we're putting onto the network. And then we're able to have some added features for notifications and things like that. One of the things I'm going to work toward is greater consistency among all my team members to make sure that the same processes and procedures are being carried out at all buildings, especially the same messages. And then as I always hit, communication and security. The digital security is something that we can always strive to improve on, and then we plan to. In terms of the fall, it's been a whirlwind since late March. So we will be moving from a one-to-one device take-home program that we've had for the last five or six years at grades nine through 12, we're going to go pre-K through 12 in August. And so that's required a monumental effort by pretty much everybody in my department. Our filtering system and our firewall system part of, and it's, you know, if any silver lining, it's good timing. We now have the capability to filter all the devices off-site. We didn't before we replaced this system back in the late fall. So now all the devices will be fully filtered. We had lots of conversations around the actual device, and we have made the decision, along with instruction, we're introducing Chromebooks into our, into our device pool. And so we currently have on order approximately 2,000 of them that are slated to be here in time for a school start for kindergarten, first and second grade is what we'll be introducing them to this year. And we have a plan moving forward, grades three and four, and possibly pre-K next year, and then grades five and six the following year. And it kind of gives us a staggered approach. It allows the natural life cycles, we implemented a six-year device lifecycle for our Windows devices. It allows that to play out, so we can still get the ROI on all the expenses we paid for those Windows devices. So we'll use those for a couple of more years. Also, in the fall, we've been working, we're going to issue some hotspots to students in need. Our first order was procured, and we have received those devices. We're in the process of finalizing our documentation, our distribution process, and getting all those ready. We also have processes that we use back in the spring for the, during the shutdown that we're going to be also reintroducing in the fall for our stakeholder support. So student and staff support while they're offsite for software and hardware issues. We had a model that worked in the spring where essentially it was a technical device desk, virtual device desk, if you will, there's a button on every website, a school's website that the student or parent could access and just ask for a couple of pieces of information, and it would go to a backend system that my T-spec for the building and instructions, instructional technology training specialists or ITTS would get notifications of. And depending on the issue, the respective one would make contact with the parent and work out those issues. We're also working to support a division-wide rollout of a video conferencing solution, a paid subscription model. We're in talks, or trying to get in talks with one vendor now. They've got a backlog to get to them, so we're trying to work those things out. And then looking, targeting next week, next Wednesday, we are going to effectively double our internet bandwidth to be able to support all the various models that we've been looking at scenarios, reopening scenarios with a lot of this video conferencing going on. So that's really what we're looking toward in the fall, really for us, it's this summer. By fall, I'm hoping we're done with all of these. But that's it.
Ms. Wingfield.
Okay. Good afternoon. The accomplishments in human resources, we again held our Manassas City Public School Teacher Job Fair. From the job fair, we have hired 11 teachers. We started Spanish for Educators, which was an opportunity for any staff who was interested, be it a custodian, IA, had the opportunity to attend Spanish for Educators class. We had one at Mayfield, one for Baldwin Intermediate, the classes were taught by an ESOL teacher. So Spanish was their first language. The attendees got a free textbook that had a CD, and they got PD. But the piece with having them at the school, the class could be basically massage for the needs of the school, whether Baldwin Intermediate said, you know what, we don't need ESOL techniques, we just want to learn the language, and they could have it in the date and the time, that was good for staff, so more staff could attend. So we gave the teachers an EPED, and this program is being expanded to Hayden next year. We again conducted teacher exit surveys this year. It's being done by consultant because our teacher's always very concerned about confidentiality and having, and being anonymous. So I'm going to keep that open for a little bit longer because I know in the summers, we always have some teachers who resign. And then once it looks like we're at the end of that, I would say probably July, and we'll have the consultant disaggregate the data and provide that information, and I'll get to teacher turnover a little bit later. Our employee referrals, we had developed this program about two years ago. This year was the first year that we implemented, and it's been fairly successful. We've hired 11 licensed staff and four classified employees. And so that was a total of 15, and we've had on to all of our employees, but one teacher. So hopefully, that will help with our teacher retention. And I think the best thing about the employer for all, anyone, any employee is eligible to receive it, it's not just for teachers. We, you know, we value all of our employees. Participate, this was our first year where we used participate. Two teachers were placed at Hayden, they're coming back, they were working on dual-language program. And we had a third teacher who's teaching ESOL at Osborne, he is also coming back. Hopefully, we will get two more new participate teachers in the dual-language program at Hayden, the COVID-19 situation notwithstanding. It's been, it's been very successful. We implemented something called a virtual interview on demand. We started doing this with our substitutes before the Corona hit, but it is a pretty cool feature. We send a link to our applicants, we have the questions, and they can interview themselves and send it back to us. The great thing about this, particularly with substitutes, that's where we first started implementing it. We don't have, because sometimes subs are working, we don't have to worry about scheduling, they can do it whenever they want. We've used it for the assistant principal at middle school, we used it for the executive director of student service. When we use this, it allows us to cast a wider net, it's almost like a screening interview. So once the interviews are returned to us, they can be evaluated, and from there, a second interview is conducted. While we didn't get to do our night of excellence this year, we had to improvise. So as you know, Dr. Newman, Amber and I, we went up to Kara's house and Mr. Short's house, presented them with their Washington Post winner plaque, the yard sign, they got the lunch, dinner from Tony's and a box of Krispy Kreme for our Washington Post nominees and retirees. We delivered a big chocolate chip cookie cake with a cookie on it. It wasn't a dinner, but at least, you know, being the sweet tooth person I am, I think I would have rather had the cookie than the dinner. But anyway, with our substitutes, we had nine professional development sessions for them, and all of the PD is paid. They were well-attended, we had everything from classroom technology, school safety, conscious classroom management, verbal de-escalation techniques, understanding student behavior, ESOL, special language and conversational Spanish. We also had three substitute thank-yous in November, December, and February, where we gave them a Hershey bar, winter break trail mix, and a Valentine donut treat. November's up 65 are distributed, December 55 are distributed, and February 40 were distributed. Just a nice little thank you for showing up. So let them know that they are appreciated. Our benefits office was an RFP for health insurance. And after the review, we found out that our local choice was our best option for health insurance. It had the best healthcare, but financially and from plan offering perspective, we had a blood drive, we started offering long-term care for our employees through Genworth, so employees now have the opportunity to select that. With the success of our tuition reimbursement, we utilized all of our monies, and it was 1,200 per employee up to 60,000. It's been increased to 1,600 for the upcoming school year, and our budget for that is 80,000. We changed our optional retirement consulting group, which is Lincoln, the Lincoln Financial Group, as our 43B and 457, we have switched from Bolton Group to USI. And you recall, too, USI is also our consultant for our health insurance. And the last thing was our open enrollment was 100% virtual. And I actually think it was smoother, and I think with employees, employees were more responsible or more responsive to the open enrollment. Areas to improve. I know up until recently, with the unemployment rate being so low, we've had a difficulty getting subs. But what we're going to do, what I've already done, is I have changed job duties between two people in my office. Part of the job duties will go to Donna Wood, she will work on the recruiting and interviewing and selection of subs. Jenny will continue with the orientation and the professional development and running absence management, because we all know it's going to be very challenging this year. So is my thought that between, we have two people working on this, that is going to increase our substitute pool. And along with that, I'll get to that when I talk about addressing COVID. With our exit surveys, we, as I said, we're going to have the consultant disaggregate the data. We and after we get that, because we have ethnic survey information from last year, is we have been more stable, we didn't hire any principals this year. So I think that helps tremendously when you have more stable leadership. So once we get that information toward the end of the summer, I can share it with Dr. With Dr. Newman and look at last year's data too and see what changes that we can. Or look at to help improve our teacher retention. As far as addressing COVID, we have already started. A virtual new employee orientation, we're going to have virtual substitute orientation. We are going to have, we usually have our, always have our teachers substitute, I mean shadow. Except if they were retiring teachers, we're going to work on. Professional development for them, so we can go ahead and start hiring now without waiting until. School hits, so they can begin to shadow. We, as I said, I've talked about changing the job duties, decrease the substitutes. We're also going to work on our substitute recognition and. Survey per task force for the employee survey has gone out, it's due Friday. And that is going to create some action items for this department to do, I know benefits. Since they work with FMLA, I know there will be areas for them to implement. And then there's also EAP resources, but I'm sure with. The information from the task force for that's going to create items for us to work on to address. COVID aside from the ones that I've already mentioned. That is it.
Okay, so that means I'm up. I'm just thinking for allowing me to share a little bit about our department, it's a big department, so I will try to get through this as quickly as possible. I'm going to start with special education and the accomplishments there. They did begin a Schoology special education course that houses information for teachers. It includes online PD opportunities and there are a wealth of them, if you want access to log on, we can give you that. It includes Stetson Inclusion Resources, because Stetson is a company that we worked with this year to. Implement the step by step for inclusive schools. It was really a piece of professional development to key staff in all nine schools. Supporting the master scheduling process, developing appropriate IEPs. And the different ways for serving kids in the general education setting. To the maximum extent possible, and that's really something that we continue to work on. And this has the potential to do some really great things for kids as they move along in in working through that. It also includes special education resources, tips for online meetings, Virginia regulations, all those kinds of things. And also an instruction section with curriculum maps, the Virginia Alternate Assessment Program, structured teaching and other things. We've had a struggle with having a behavior specialist over the years, but yet we recognize that that is truly something that is needed. So we worked with a company called Evidence Based Classroom Solutions this year, they provided. ABA services to our self-contained classrooms. But also started to recognize that our general education teachers could use some support in that as well. So also started to work with some of those students who were struggling with continual discipline issues. But could use some structure and and they were very supportive of in that. And when the closure happened, they then provided online professional development for all teachers and also for parents. We own those videos, so those can be used in the future as we move forward, it was well attended by Manassas teachers. I was just very impressed of the number who took the time to log on and listen to all of, all of the resources that they had. We also, our early childhood special education program, it was really housed at Dean for many, many years. And we moved. Two of the classes out into other elementary schools, the primary reason for that is they could then. Participate in more inclusion opportunities with the VPI programs that are there. Heard some very positive things from both the VPI teachers and our early childhood self-contained teachers. We implemented the teach model for instruction in all of our self-contained autism classrooms, it's a more visual learning program. We supported Orton Gillingham reading strategies implementation in all the piloting elementary schools and then planned. More structured IMSC reading professional development for all special education teachers in August. During COVID, obviously, we planned, provided distance learning materials and supports. As well as continuing all the required special education meetings, which was a big shift for staff and families as they really used the Zoom model. And really led to some great conversations with families that don't normally happen in the meetings we have at school because we're trying to get back to our classrooms. So that was great. In the ESOL world, we procured and implemented Elevation. It's an online system for all the required ESOL paperwork and meetings. It houses the data for the students as well as instructional planning support for teachers. We provided support to utilize that data and instructional planning features in the program at all nine schools. They created a Schoology course for co-teaching for Ls to provide more support for the teachers doing that. Provided supporting English learners class for aspiring ESOL teachers to prepare them to take the praxis. They created and implemented an ESOL English 10 course. And a literacy class for long-term Ls at the high school. They also provided distance learning materials and supports during the closure. Student Services is a bigger group and I kind of just lumped them all together, so I am 100% certain that I will miss some things that they were able to accomplish. But they began a Schoology Student Services course and it's really all the policies and procedures for all those areas because. Principals would oftentimes need to get a policy or a procedure real quick and they were going to a variety of places to find them. We had internet resources, we had a certain drive on the. Internet on our. Division. Had all the resources on it and then they'd be looking at the policy book or calling someone. So this put all those things in in one place, it's for attendance, discipline, health services. Crisis management, McKinney Vento, our homeless students, enrollment and student transfer, school counseling, field trips. Visitors and volunteers, social work, home base and homebound instruction, so they were able to go there to find a variety of resources kind of at their fingertips. And we implemented Swiss for behavioral referral data. Collection at seven out of the nine schools, all nine schools will use that next year, I assume. We provided professional development for restorative practices and supported that implementation at all schools. We completed the three-year triennial assessment of the wellness plan and goals. Developed a comprehensive community resources page for the website. Developed a set of materials for all high school students experiencing homelessness and the key there is that as they move on from us, they are going to become independent individuals. And there are resources that are available to them that they may not have known about in the past. So Mrs. Taylor worked really hard to get a folder for them that was ready and she met with all of them to provide them with that folder and talk through what they would be doing after school. They attended a variety of community-based meetings to keep abreast of trends and resources all during the closure, so they could then provide that to. Counselors and principals if they called them or teachers. We also made sure we had all of our fire drills, that was very important. School support that we provided, we have monthly touch-based meetings with principals. School support was provided across all of our divisions, we worked really hard to make sure that we were in the schools and providing that support onsite. We did provide learning walk, learning walks and protocols for the teach model as that was implemented. So principals knew what they were looking for when they went into those classrooms. And professional development was provided across all of the departments or all of the pieces to the student services department that we talked about. What does our department need to improve upon and or grow? Well, most of that will be up to Dr. Brent as he meets with all of the staff and really determines what. He's looking at in the upcoming year, I know he is having or starting a task force. But also, you know, many of the things that we talked about in terms of inclusive practices, restorative practices, the Swiss implementation. Really a lot of focus on the the social emotional learning and the trauma-informed care that's going to be necessary as we come back into school, I'm sure those are all on his radar. And in terms of addressing the pandemic, all of the members, student services team are on task force pieces. They are supported, developing supports for all the models of reopening that may or may not occur. And really developing a comprehensive list of professional development, so they are ready to go. And communicate that with staff and work with families as we return. That's it.
Dr. Saunders.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to talk a little bit about certainly student achievement. And like Becky has said, or like Dr. Saunders shared, it's a very large department. And as I talk tonight, I just have to say that, you know, most of the work that I talk about. Many other people have done and are participating in from all of us at central office to our school principals, to our assistant principals, to our teachers. And all of the support staff are really, they have a hand in all of this and then they are generating much of what's happening. So we're going to talk a little bit about the accomplishments, you know, what have we done this school year? Many of these things you've already heard because we do a lot of presentations to the board. But we're, I'm going to break it up into different chunks, we'll start with curriculum and instruction. You have heard a lot tonight about Schoology and that really has been. Something that we've been working on in the Department of Instruction over the last five years. And this year we spent a good portion of that using full utilization of Schoology in grades five through 12. Our students, our staff, our families are really starting to engage in that platform and that's our learning management system for both students and staff. We began a Schoology curriculum and instruction course, like Becky talked about, she, they started a course in student services. We now have all of our resources sort of housed in one area so that teachers can quickly access. Information that might have been in multiple places over a period of time. Those, those resources include five key instructional resources around project-based learning, learning-focused schools. It has a Gail Reference Library, which are lots of resources for all of our teachers. Again, elevation and I ready. We've done some updates, all of our student learning maps have been updated, our pacing guides and other division curriculum resources, not only were they updated once. But we're in the process of doing that again, as we, you know, this kind of blends into the COVID conversation. But one of the things that our department has been working very hard on is how do we. Address any learning gaps that students may have had when they've not been in school since March. And so what does that look like, how does that change our pacing, how does that change our. You know, our priorities about what needs to be taught at different levels and and how do we fill those gaps in really effective ways? We developed a fully interactive one, one-stop shop for curriculum at a glance documents in the four content areas. So teachers can very quickly get into those documents, they are hyperlinked to Department of Education documents, they're hyperlinked to all kinds of other resources that we have in our. In our system, so it's very user-friendly and accessible to our staff as they continue to plan their lessons. We provided, you know, I think you all saw the successful English Language Arts resource adoption. That was more than a 12-month experience for teachers, for principals. For our community members to participate in that very large adoption process and so that was a successful purchase or process for us. And we're really proud of what we brought forward, that it's an extremely diverse set of resources that really showcases opportunities for our kids to see different kinds of writing and reading across. Multiple genres and multiple authors and lots of diversity within that. We, we have a new STEM plan, a three-year plan for pre-K through 12 and Dr. Jones, Leslie Jones presented that to the academic committee not too long ago. Really proud of our continued work around the area of STEM. That's again, something that started about five years ago and we just continue to grow and grow all the way from pre-K through 12th grade. We provided two new CTE course proposals, one in the area of health and one in the area of agriculture. That we are looking forward to putting into place over the next three years. We've had a revision to the health, health student learning maps and initiated a process to update the family life education curriculum. That will take, that will take place in in the year to come. You had the opportunity here, the academic committee, academic committee to hear from Anthony Vargas, our new GT coordinator, who's just been wonderful. And he has made some recommendations for modifications over the next three years. To increase participation and identification in our gifted program. So that we're incorporating more students across the division into a great opportunity that we have for our students. We're really proud that we increased the number of applicants to our summer residential governor's school programs. At the state level and that was something that Carol Hart has worked very hard to do over the last year to. Publish that and to get that out to our our families and our students. We also included Project Lead the Way modules, they started at all the elementary schools in grades K1 and 1 and 2. While we have Baldwin Elementary, that is a Project Lead the Way launch school. We recognize that those modules are good for our kids across the division and so our principals and our staffs have really worked hard to. Implement those modules across that K1, 2. And then we are strengthening those offerings for Project Lead the Way across grades five and six. Again, Project Lead the Way is something that we're really proud that we have pre-K through grade 12 for our students to engage in along the way. So in the area of assessment and strategic planning. We have procured and set up a new online assessment system. You may, you may remember the conversations around our old system, which was called Interactive Achievement. We now are moving to Performance Matters, which is a, an assessment platform in Power School. It's much more user-friendly, the teachers can access it a whole lot easier and that professional learning has already started. Around that particular platform. We also spent a great deal of time this year on a redeveloping the balanced assessment plan from Anassas City Public Schools. And much like some of the work that was going on at the state level, you know, we really felt that it was time for teachers to have. The autonomy in their classroom to, to own those assessments and to really decide what was the most appropriate things going on in their classroom. And and how they could do those assessments in their classroom, so we're moving away from. Very prescriptive division-wide assessments and moving into a much more balanced program that really gives teachers flexibility. There will still be some division assessments, but fewer than what we've had and really the, the genesis around that is that. That's what we heard from teachers, that they wanted to be able to assess students in the most appropriate ways in their classrooms. And have the ability to do that without feeling like they were pressured into division assessments that their students may or may not be prepared for at that time. So we will have two division level, level assessments throughout the year in the core product, in the core subjects. That's again, to get a test for us, to get a feel for, for the division to help us guide. Our professional learning and help us guide, you know, any, any places that we might need to support our staff or our students as if we see some gaps in learning. So while it's, it's much more appropriate. In the movement that we see moving away from so many of the standards, the SOL tests and the high accountability tests. And really moving towards giving teachers the opportunity to have much more project-based learning going on in their classrooms and really making those. Assignments and assessments themselves. We've done some work in Power School to consolidate all the student contact information. So that parents can link parents seamlessly to all students in Power School, so if you have more than one student, you can now. Well, soon, whenever we do that rollover, there will be one login rather than multiple logins to do that. And we began developing the first phase of our in-house data warehouse and analytics platform, you all heard. Have talked to Dave Lyon along the way and know that Mr. Lyon has been working on our own in-house, in-house data warehouse and those analytics. Those are actually really coming in into good use at the moment as we're trying to figure out ways to collect data in different kinds of ways through COVID. And trying to figure out which families are connected to which and how do we get information out, so this is actually a good time for that as well. In the area of professional learning, you know, we're lucky that we have a rock star in Katie Keegan. And she is dynamic in that work and really has a passion for that. And so we've been able to offer just an abundance of professional learning opportunities across the division. Some things I would highlight would be vocabulary instruction across all of our schools, we know that vocabulary is important. Increased professional development opportunities, as Billy Kaye said, for specialists and and support staff. Continued collaboration around PBL and LFS. Continued collaboration around PBL and LFS. Class observations at our pre-K level. There are some requirements around new observation tools at the pre-K level. And we're very lucky that we also have Shama Batista, who is class certified and really went through a whole process to be able to do those observations at the pre-K level. And she's also a rock star that we are fortunate to have here. We've also done quite a bit of revised planning around the team program, which is our new teacher program, making sure that we're supporting our new staff as they come in and make them feel comfortable and welcome and supported as, as they move on. We revised the principal and assistant principal meeting structure to include learning walks with a school-specific focus. It was very well received by our principals and our assistant principals this year for the time that we were able to do it. That we really, principals really drove the learning walks that were happening in their schools around a problem of practice that they were experiencing in their own school. And so they were able to utilize their colleagues as, as peers and as support to try to make good decisions around something that they were challenged with or needed to maybe try and do different. In the area of community engagement, just a couple of things I would highlight. We secured multiple grants and donations to fund various aspects of instruction, robotics, CTE, Jamestown Presentations at grade four. Through the foundation, we've been able to secure additional funds through Lockheed Martin, other donors who want to support our school system in moving to a distance learning model or the virtual model. So we're really proud of our engagement in the community that way. We revised the pre-K registration process. It now starts earlier, more parent nights and one inclusive appointment for parents. We were, we used to have parents coming in multiple times, but we've structured it so that parents are only coming in once. And still, at this point, they're doing them on the phone with Ms. Batista, but we know that at some point, we will have to meet face-to-face. We've been engaging the business community through our CTE programming and the advisory board. We had a great advisory dinner early on in the school year. And Dr. Davis was, was the person in charge of putting that together. We've worked with our Georgetown South partners to offer multiple community nights around math and technology. You know, Ray Singletary has gone into the Georgetown South Community Center numerous times to support the students there and run some really fun math nights to do, to do some great things there, as well as Pedro Hernandez has been in there for technology to really talk about how do you use Schoology and how do you keep our kids safe? Internet safety pieces. The last area I would share around accomplishments would be some school supports. You know, Dr. Stone and I spend, spent lots of, lots of time with our principals. We met with them monthly. We were constantly just kind of trying to provide them support with their own growth and their own development along the way. We supported the Osborne High School On-Time Graduation Plan. I know Mr. Flugrath has done an amazing job at Osborne High School, really focusing their work around improving the graduation rate. And he saw some amazing things happen this year. We all really wish that we could have finished the full year in a, in a really traditional way in lots of places, whether it was the progress we were seeing at Baldwin Elementary School or Dean or the graduation rate at Osborne High School. So we know there are good things to come. We spent some time supporting and helping the principals through the budget process so that Mr. Flugrath could secure those additional staff members, the on-time graduation staff member and people to really focus their time around blended learning and some other kinds of activities that he's really put together to strengthen the instruction at Osborne and to get our students across the graduation line in a really effective way. So we're proud of that work. We've also provided learning walks and protocols and enhanced instructional conversations. And then we continued our quarterly data meetings with Dr. Newman and the principals. And again, we didn't get to finish too many of those, but we know that that process has been really effective. Some things that we want to improve upon or grow. You know, we are constantly present in our schools. I'm really proud of our department for that, but we can always continue to grow there. We know that our staffs enjoy seeing us and enjoy our support. And so that's something that we can continue to do. We do want to work on Schoology use grades pre-K through four and the parent supports that go along with that. We know that we're in a good place with five through 12, but certainly the closure has indicated to us that grades pre-K through four are an area that we need to quickly ramp up and really spend some time around that. And then supporting our teachers and our principals with the New Balanced Assessment Plan. We know that as we change, we need different kinds of supports along the way. So those will be some of the focus areas that we will have for the coming year. And the last piece is how are we addressing the pandemic for the fall? Well, I think we kind of, the Department of Asses, of Student Achievement really drives most of the task forces. You know, kids are the reason why we're doing the task force and we want to make sure that they are safe, that they get the most high-quality education, that they have the resources that they need. And, you know, we are participating in pretty much every aspect of the, of the task force work and trying to support those groups along the way. So you'll hear from me again about task force a little bit later. So I'll, I'll save some of that for that point. And that would be it.
Mr. Hawkins.
Okay, good evening. So we start off with what the department accomplished this year with finance. We, we made it another year with, with no audit findings, clean audit report. Is the city has decided to change auditors this year back to Robinson Farmer Cox, which we had for probably 10 or 15 years. And now they, they were going to change to, change again, but we still feel good about it. We, we've not had any audit findings in many years and we hope to continue that. All of our funds have been properly accounted for. And our fund balance has increased this year to a current status of a little over $7.7 million. And we anticipate that to grow again at the end of June 30th this year. So the school board is, is in good financial shape going forward to withstand whatever happens in the next school year regarding the pandemic and, and whatever cost may, may, we may incur. I went last night to city council to get the CARES Act money appropriated to, to school boards. So that's about a million, almost a million dollars for us with, in CARES Act funds. As far as the budget office is concerned, we modified the zero-based budget approach this year for what we've done in the past by documenting the three-year average of expenditures on a line-by-line basis in an effort to help refine the budget and to help the, the budget holders, the principals and the directors to understand, to zero in on what the real true need was so that we could hopefully provide adequate funding for all true needs. As far as food services is concerned, we have a lot of equipment purchases. One of them, some of you may remember, we bought a big dishwasher over at Osborne. When I say that, it's because it was about $100,000 is what the dishwasher cost over at Osborne. And we had some standing warmers, a freezer over at Weems, some mobile heating units at Round and Dean. And we purchased some additional laptops and pen pads to assist with the second chance. And we hired a new position called a Culinary Operations Specialist. That position is held by a person by the name of Marvin Ramirez. And they, he helps and he, he's at, at schools all the time, helping our food service managers in the daily operations of their programs. As far as transportation is concerned, we continue to refine our bus routes. We had refined 12 routes last year to take less time by rearranging some bus stops and, and other bus runs. And in doing so, we saved approximately 360 man-hours and over 400 gallons of diesel fuel. In addition, we hired three new bus drivers, two new buses, attendants. We purchased four additional, four new buses to replace the old ones that we had with the latest safety features, including backup cameras, computerized sensors for following distance, speed and centerline crossing. So if you, if a bus driver is going too fast or crosses the centerline or whatever, does something unsafe, their seat will actually start vibrating and shaking to, to make them aware that they're doing something wrong. With facilities, Alba, can you bring up the spreadsheet for facilities? Let me show you the programs, that, that one. Yep, that one. Make it bigger. There we go. So these are the, the projects that we've done, had, did last summer, 2019, and the summer projects that we're beginning now. You can see most of last summer's projects primarily related to enhancement of Dean. Had a number of projects that went, went through at Dean. The school board had allocated, I think, about a million and a half dollars to, to Dean project. We spent about approximately a million dollars, of that a million and a half last year. See, we have the projects that we did at Met and at Osborne. For FY '20, we have a lot of other projects going. We've got a very ambitious year, again, for this summer. You can see all the areas, the ones highlighted in yellow are the redistricting consultant that the school board had approved. We decided it was probably not the right time to be going through the, that process again with so many unknowns about the school year and, and how the school division will operate going forward. So we postponed that at least for another year. And we are still, well, the mayor announced last night at the city council meeting that, that Mr. Williams and, and the mayor had spoken and had been discussing the central office lease of the, of the current police station. He didn't go into any details about the, about what, what action has been taken, but I'm assuming that will happen soon. So we are holding off spending any money on architectural engineering services for the central office until such time as we haven't agreed upon lease. But we have a lot of projects ongoing. One of the projects that's not on here that I neglected to put on here was for the playground at Hayden. Please, if you get a chance, go by the playground at Hayden. That was a, a project that was done by both our, in conjunction with us and with the city Parks and Rec. They did a great job. And you can see a lot of projects at Osborne as far as, I went over today and looked at the new library furniture and carpet in, at Osborne. It's beautiful. We can't wait to open up in August so that you all will be able to come by and see and look at all of the wonderful improvements we've made in, in the division. All the projects that we have ongoing right now as far as around HVAC, the Mayfield roof, those are the two biggest projects that we have going on right now are all on schedule and should be completed prior to the first day of school. We don't know of any, any issues at this time. So let's go back to. So what areas do we need to improve? I think with the budget office, we're planning to change our budget development training process. We're going to start meeting with individual principals and directors and with their bookkeepers in hopes that we can be able to have a more, a better understanding of, of their budget, what they have, what their true needs are. Sometimes things get lost in translation or people don't feel comfortable asking us questions in the group. So we want to, I think we're going to try a more personalized approach. As far as food service is concerned, we're going to, we want to improve the, the cafeteria experience. And you're going to start seeing some of this at Osborne this year, but we want to have a more friendly atmosphere, not so much institutionalized atmosphere that we have now. You'll see it transform into more of like a cafe type of thing, much more like going into Panera Bread or somewhere like that to eat than, than what we've had in the past. So you'll see the changes in the furniture, the changes in the, the painting, in the, the lighting. Everything will change, signage, the furniture, of course, all of that will change. So Osborne will be first and then second in line will be Mayfield and then Met. Transportation, some of the things that we would like, we need to improve on is, is of course, we're always looking for, trying to hire new drivers in attendance. We are, we struggle with that all the time. And, and it is primarily due to the, the economy prior to us being shut, shut down. So hopefully, we may be able to get a few more drivers for this upcoming year. Facilities, we have primarily two or three things. One of them is of a hiring additional staff. We need to have another HVAC guy. We need to have another plumber. You're already aware about the plumber. And we put that position on hold until such time as funding comes back. HVAC person that we would like to hire, we're reorganizing in the facilities department. And we hope to be able to create a new HVAC position shortly. We have one HVAC guy and one plumber in the whole division. Due to the, to the limited number of maintenance people that we have, we always struggle keeping them updated with current technology because they can't be out of the division during the school year. And then in the, in the summer, that's when we have all of these major projects. So we, we have to do a better job in finding ways to free up these guys so they can go and receive additional training. Another problem that we, that we run into is our work order system is outdated. It needs replacement. And we will be working with the procurement, with the purchasing officer this year to send out an RFP and see what we can do to replace our, our work order system. Another thing that we struggle with from time to time is, is we have several, we have many standalone independent systems in the buildings. Most of the time, they don't talk to each other though. And so what we want to do is try to be able to have systems that are, are integrated so they can talk to each other and we can operate much more efficiently. What is the department doing to get ready for the upcoming school year? Well, that's, we, you know, we've all been endless meetings over about trying with the task force, trying to determine what we're, how we're going to come back this fall. From changing the cleaning schedules to buying a PPE to how we're serving meals to our students. We've served to, to date, almost 75,000 meals since March 13th. And the food program will continue for the foreseeable future. Even after, even if, if we start back school in any form, less than children coming into the school every day, all children coming into school every day, then we will continue to be having the meal program distributions like we have, we've had since March 13th. Alba, can you pull up the next slide about the, I want to show the board something about what the effects of the pandemic have had on our students? You can make that a little bigger, please. So if you were to look at these, this sheet here, this is our free and reduced lunch calculation by school. We've had dramatic increases. This is just March 2020. We don't have data yet for April, May and June, when the pandemic really took effect since we were not in school, but we're working to, to get you that data. But you see, each school, all of the schools have, have increased in the amount of students that are on free and reduced lunch, some of them dramatically. For example, Hayden Elementary School went up 16 percentage points. So last year at this time, they were at 64%. Now they're at 80%. You know, Baldwin Elementary, last year at this time, they were at 65%. This year, they're at 78.73. You know, so all of the schools have gotten, all of our students in our schools, the free and reduced lunch rate has gone up, some of them very dramatically. So let's just show you the effects that this, the pandemic has had, had on our students and the socioeconomic status of our family. So some of the other things that we've been doing, trying to get, to get ready for this, this, when school starts back, is we've been trying to buy hand sanitizer, by, you know, finding, finding things are in short supply, trying to get on the waiting list, getting equipment that we can use to help disinfect areas quickly. So we've, we've been, I've got a meeting with our, my task force tomorrow morning and hopefully we'll, we'll receive their input and we'll be ready to turn our, turn our program, our plan in to Dr. Saunders. Dr. Saunders and the superintendent by our deadline date. Um, one of the things about food services is that we're working with the DOE to try to determine whether or not we, uh, can handle it financially, uh, with all of our schools, maybe not Osborne, but almost all of our, all of our other schools where children will not have to pay uh, regardless of their socioeconomic status for breakfast, lunch or anything, uh, at all. Uh, so we're working on that right now. That may be something that'll be, uh, coming back soon. Uh, we've enrolled our department in what they call the, the favors government program, and this is for the first time. That they will be able to use, uh, government funds to purchase local or regional, uh, produce for all schools. Um, this will aid in our goal of providing additional fruits and vegetables, uh, to our students. Another thing that will be, uh, that we, we've been doing is working with maintenance and IT and then installing new monitoring technology for all of our walk-in free, uh, freezers and refrigerators. Uh, that will allow us better temperature monitoring in order to prevent food loss if, if, uh, the power goes out or if the unit goes down. So we, we have a lot going on and, uh, I have a fantastic team and I'm very proud of them and, uh, and all the work that they've done. I I heard you, Dr. Dr. Saunders talk about how many staff members were involved. It's amazing when you think about all the good people that we have working from Nesta City and they, and the work that they do for us. And, um, I'm, I'm very blessed with my team. So, um, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. And I, I just want to touch on one thing that, uh, Mr. Hawkins just talked about and it was at the end. My first meeting with Mr. Hawkins and Ms. Jackson, uh, I asked about a program that, um, would allow all of our students to eat free for breakfast and lunch. And at that time, I, Mr. Hawkins, I believe it was only two schools at that time. So, uh, we didn't think it would be fair to just have two elementary schools where our students, uh, could eat for free while the others would have to pay. Uh, but I, I believe, um, numbers are, uh, will, will stay the same and we can get up to eight of the schools. Uh, with Osborne being the one not meeting the criteria. I would definitely, um, ask the board to to at least entertain the thought of going with, uh, the eight schools and giving those students the opportunity to eat a free breakfast and lunch every day. Uh, I'm glad that Mr. Hawkins brought that up and hopefully we'll get that information from the Department of Education soon. Uh, and then we can start having, uh, that conversation. Look at how things are going. In the economic world, um, you know, people are struggling. And so I think if we can provide this opportunity for our families at all the elementary intermediate and middle schools, I think it would be a great thing that would be received, uh, positively by our community. Yes, I would love all nine to be there, but if we were going to miss one for a later start, uh, I think the high school would be that, that school. Yeah, I just wanted to, to touch on that. I will be brief. Uh, I think as always, um, those guys did a great job. Uh, I am truly blessed to be surrounded by this team, this leadership team. Uh, your, our, our weekly meetings on Monday. Very productive in what we're doing for our school division. So I just wanted to first just thank them. Uh, you know, I sent them an email after my evaluation. As I told them, I believe that superintendent's evaluation uh, is a team effort. And, uh, our, uh, evaluation was positive. I just wanted them to know that. As far as what was presented today, some of it we touched on last week, one, uh, the evaluation meeting. But I think if you look at what was shared today, uh, you'll see that you have a hardworking, dedicated uh, staff here at Vanessa City, uh, with a clear focus on doing what's best for students and, and moving the needle in, in the area of student achievement. Uh, with that, uh, I would like to open the floor for board, uh, to ask us any questions or share any concerns that we can address.
It's like Mr. Di Maria is moving. Questions, Mr. Di Maria? Can't hear you, sir.
All right. No, I was just trying to turn up my, uh, speaker because Dr. Newman was kind of quiet, you know, because he's such a shy, quiet guy. Um, but as long as you called on me, I'll, I'll go through my question. How do you want to do this Sanford? Each department or every question? I can't hear you.
Just go for it. Ask all the questions you want.
Okay. All right, um. Al, um, I got no questions. Just like everybody else, this has been a very trying year and communications is no different. And I think you and your group did a great job. So thank you very much. Bobby, same thing. Um, talk about a pain in the butt, having all of a sudden go to all IT and I mean, I don't know any better, but it sure does seem to me that we did very well and I appreciate all your efforts. Uh, can you ask, what, what is fully filtered? Uh, does that mean that you can't get on what you're not supposed to get on when you're using our computer somewhere else? What is fully filtered?
All site filtered. Uh, currently only the high school devices. We had a cloud subscription service for a separate filtering product. So the devices that we had to send home in a rush, the loner laptops in the spring, almost two thousand that we sent home had no filtering whatsoever. And we made that ma- made the parents aware of that in all the, all the documentation or communication. But now with this new filtering system, we have off-site capabilities and we can push updates to them remotely. So if, uh, you know, the need changes, something that should be blocked or allowed vice versa, uh, we'll have the capability to do that.
Okay, great. Thanks Bobby. Uh, Billy Kay, as I hope that you're right, that we still have trouble with our, uh, substitutes, but right off the bat, we might not. The unemployment may remain a little bit higher than normal. Um, but I appreciate your efforts trying to figure out how to get more substitutes in the school or I don't know how the hell we're going to substitute on, online, but whatever you have to do there, we appreciate your efforts there. Uh, Becky, I got nothing, but you know, making fun of me for your, uh, you're leaving, I, you know, you're doing a fine job. You did a fine job. There's the door. Thank you very much. Um, Melissa. Okay. I like the, I love the idea of less division assessments. Um, and I, the more I read and try and learn and keep up with you and your people is very difficult for me. But the more I read about SOLs and high stakes testing, the madder I get about it. This year, uh, the fact that the federal government, and I know the state can't do it until the federal government does it. The fact that they have not eliminated high stakes testing for this year, for this upcoming year, it's ridiculous. These kids are going to be starting out further behind than they would have had we had them in the classroom all year long and they need to be aware of that. High stakes testing does nothing for our kids. It only does things to try and make the schools look bad. Um, they can't be used from what I can see as diagnostic tool. Our, our teachers get nothing out of it. All they're doing is trying to get these kids to pass these tests. And now they're going to have to try and get them to pass these tests online. Um, I, I, I'm very confident we're not going back to online full-time, um, to begin with. And so it's going to be behind and all it's going to do is stress out our kids and our teachers. So the fact that you're trying to, to lower our, uh, uh, division assessments as much as possible, that can help, but at least our division assessments, I'm sure are beneficial to our kids because our teachers can use those. Um, but, uh, I'm just venting at you about the SOLs because you're the person I do that to. And I appreciate you being there for me to, to vent. So thank you for everything you've done. Um, Andy. Uh, you like the idea that you got a clean audit again?
I just, you know.
I do. I really love it. We take it.
That goes along with new floors. Andy wants clean audit and floors and, and some furniture. You give this guy that stuff. He's a happy camper.
I didn't mention the floors today. I, I want you to know, I left that out.
You don't have to, Andy. You've been.
It written down, but I didn't say it.
It was, it was on the list. I um, as far as what you mentioned about, uh, free lunches, um, I am all for that. I did some quick, quick, uh, calculations here, which maybe Lisa doesn't know, but chances are my quick calculations are wrong. But with minus Osborne, and if we, if they don't qualify minus Osborne, just free lunches, we're at sixty-two percent. Um, if we qualify for free lunches for every, what's the point of keeping track of all of that and uh, putting our staff and our kids through having to go through this stuff? Just, just if we're qualified for it, I'm all for going free lunches across the board, obviously, except for Osborne, they don't qualify. Um, and, uh, since they're only fifty percent free lunch, uh, seems kind of ridiculous, but, um, uh, just, uh, just so you know, I'm all for that. Um, and you were the last one, right? I'm, I'm, yes, questions in my comments then. Thank you Sanford.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Aubret.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, I've got about five, six, seven questions. And Mr. Barrett, I'll start with you. Because we started talking and you started off with a security engineer and revamping. We had a lot of conversation last year. And we know cybersecurity, student records, you know, bad actors, the whole thing, that we have a vulnerable thing. We're very concerned about our data being held hostage. Are, is there any risk in the approach you're taking?
I'd be lying if I said there wasn't, but sure. Um, but yes, uh, we're, we're we feel good with a multi-pronged approach with four, four people, you know, two network engineers and then Mr. Sansone and myself are both former network engineers. Um, with all those eyeballs on it and, and trying to incorporate security into everything that we do, coupled with the fact that we also have some consulting money um, for services. And we've got a couple of good support partners that we regularly engage for projects. Um, we feel confident that we're, we're able to, uh, to get what we need. Um, ideally it would be, you know, in a perfect world, it'd be, it'd be good to get somebody that specifically specializes in that, but we just really came down to market. We just could not compete. Obviously the markets changed a little bit. We may be, you know, may be a little more likely to get somebody at this point, but, um, we just weren't able to get the kind of talent that we needed. Um, the candidate that we, in our last interview cycle in the fall, that we kind of saw as the best candidate really did not have much more experience than we did. And at best was a junior security engineer. Um, and we just felt that we could do better, um, and have more benefit if we reorganized.
That, that's fine. I just kind of wanted to understand it because half the battle, as you well know, is our own staff.
Absolutely.
It's phishing emails that come in and people just wantonly click on things they shouldn't.
That's it. Yep.
Um, my next question kind of is a, uh, I'm going to link it together. Ms. Wingfield, Dr. Sanders, Mr. Barrett. Because everybody talked a little bit about it. Mr. Barrett talked about, um, technology instructors in the IT department helping out. Um, Ms. Wingfield talked about professional development. Dr. Saunders talked about, uh, professional learning. I have no idea what we're going to approve in a couple of weeks as far as a back-to-school plan. But I think we all would be willing to take a bet that it's not what we know the historic normal is. And from my personal perspective, going to what Mr. Di Mary did, as he waxed on about high stakes testing. I think we should have held everybody back. The past school year is an absolute failure nationwide. But no one's got that kind of chutzpah to say that. Now, what are we doing with our staff to make sure it doesn't happen two years in a row? We've got to engage the kids. We have to hold them accountable, not say it's a free pass, but what all are we doing to make sure our teachers feel comfortable in a blended learning environment?
So I'll, I think I'll start. No one else is jumping in. So I'll, I'll go ahead and just share some, uh, you know, there a large piece of the task force work around instruction is the professional learning piece and is setting up expectations for both students, staff and families to understand what, um, a distance learning model would look like and how, um, those expectations would be communicated. That's a big part of what that team is really working on. Um, our IT team staff, as Bobby kind of talked about, um, is key to making that happen. They're doing and preparing already the professional learning, um, that would need to happen for our teachers to become as proficient as they can be and in pieces of, uh, technology or platforms that we need them to be proficient in. And the other side of that is the student as well and the parent. So we have a, you know, multi-tiered approach to that. So certainly something that we're focused on. We recognize that, um, all of the, um, all of the guidance that we're receiving is around, this is new learning that will happen beginning August seventeenth. It is new learning. We will not be doing review. There will be new, uh, concepts being taught. There will be, uh, expectations for families. But we also know that we have to be flexible in those expectations. And so we have to provide them in, in as many ways as possible that students can access them. Certainly the ideal is to have them in the classroom. Uh, but if that's not the, um, the outcome, then we have to be really, um, structured and specific about what it looks like in, outside of the classroom. Um, and those are some requirements set around that. So I'm confident that our task force team is really focused on that. That was certainly a frustration of, um, of, of some of our staff and some of our students that we heard, um, throughout the closure time. Um, and so that's definitely something that we will be focused on. I saw some comment about the zero week. Uh, and so the, we also have, uh, talked about having zero units, um, you know, things that would pre that would go back and kind of look at what students missed in the previous term, right, in the previous quarter. And, um, try to fill those gaps, um, in the best way possible, but not just fill them, not just take a very short amount of time and fill them. It might take us all year. It might be individual modules that students are working through, um, targeted modules. It becomes much more difficult at the high school level. You know, when you're talking about, you're not going from fifth grade math to sixth grade math. You're going from algebra two to, you know, whatever the next one is, or algebra one to algebra two, algebra one to geometry or whatever your path is. Um, so it becomes much more difficult when the content changes at the high school level. How do we know that they got the content that they needed in the previous course? And so they're really working, um, very hard at that level with teachers and with, um, our content specialists, uh, to do that work. So I don't know if I commented on what you wanted or at least gave you the, the background to know that um, that is definitely something that we are working on and would be a priority for us in a virtual environment.
And I just piggyback off to say that, you know, a part of our task force is to work together. And so from an IT standpoint, we're, we're there to facilitate and provide the tools and technical resources, um, to make sure that they're successful. Um, students and staff and, uh, being able to communicate and, uh, reach into the classroom and do whatever they need to do. So.
And I would also indicate that, you know, it is our goal that we would have, to use the terms, we would have both synchronous and asynchronous learning happening. So there would be live teaching happening. Um, where students were, you know, our, our plans and our work is, is working us towards that. Um, in the event that students were not physically in the classroom, there would be opportunities for live instruction.
Thanks. You did address me. My concern is we had three, four months worth of bad behavior that I'm hoping we didn't ingrain into, into future practice. Mr. Hawkins, you talked a lot about the current staff and the need for certifications and all. I, I guess I would just have hoped that since March, we I guess I would just have hoped that since March, we really haven't had a lot of traffic into schools and that we would have used that time with our maintenance and custodial staff to do training in those certifications. Or did I miss something?
No, we didn't. We, we just don't, we didn't have a lot going on, but available to us. We just didn't have a lot to go to because of the pandemic. But we'll once the, once the economy starts back and once we get to our new normal, we'll, we'll get back to that and we'll get our staff up to date.
Okay. And then going forward, you mentioned this year, a new work order system. I guess my question, as you look at it, would be, how is our facility work order need different from any lar, any other large business who maintains, you know, a million square feet of commercial space and has the same kind of operation maintenance issues we have? What do other businesses, what are the major, you know, facility management companies use and how do they do it? And are we just using some really old product? And I think that's something I think at least personally as a board member, I'd like to understand. Not right now, but it's kind of a, I think it's a market-based condition thing. It's from my perspective, I don't think we're that much different than anybody else.
We're not. And I, and I think it'll be very relatively easy to get this upgrade. There's plenty of product out there. We're just going to have to select a vendor and what product works best for us. But we're not really any different than anybody else.
And Mr. Hawkins, you also, when you talked free and reduced lunch, with the student number changes that you presented, did I, I thought at one point it was, because it was month in March data. Then you were comparing them, I believe, to the previous year. Was that correct? Or was it earlier in the current academic year?
No, we were comparing March 2019 to March 2020. And we could, we have just shown year-over-year data showing how much difference it was just in, in one year. I want to provide to you April and May and June data, but we don't, we're, we're struggling with that data right now since we weren't in school. But I think we'll be able to provide that to you shortly.
You, you hit the nail on the head, right? I think if we compared the same academic year data, then we could truly say with the same student population, because you're looking at demographic change, change of students, but with the same basic student population, then you could actually understand the economic impact that COVID's had on our schools and our, our students and their families.
I expected them to go up, but I was shocked at the, at the rate of increase. I mean, how mu, how significantly it changed just in one year? Going up 16 percentage points at Hayden and 13 at Baldwin. And most of them were in the, in the four or five percentage point range. I was, I was just shocked about how much it went up.
And then just a personal comment going forward. There's no such thing as a free lunch. So if we go that way, I want mine too. I'm, I'm not sure I'm convinced. And lastly, Dr. Stone, my kid's elementary school principal. Best of luck. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Seibert had some questions.
Hello. Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for all the updates. Two of my questions were already answered, so thanks, Scott, for covering those, Dr. Saunders and Andy. Question for Andy. When you were talking about improving the cafeteria experience, does it also include food, food changes, food improvement? I mean.
Yeah, I mean, we, you have to understand that we have to follow the, the program with the federal government. There's only so much that we can do, but we're always trying to find ways to be able to provide better, fresher, provide things that the students want to eat and also be within the, within the government's guidelines right now. So sometimes that's a, that's a difficult thing.
Yeah. Maybe with those improvements, we might get more kids signed up at Osborne and then boost that number up a bit.
Yeah, we've historically, we've always had trouble with having our, the free and reduced lunch population at Osborne being much lower than, than the other schools in the district. I don't think those children are any, any well, well-off than the others. They, we just have, just need to increase our efforts to try to get students to, and their families to fill out their free and reduced lunch application so that we can serve, serve that in true need.
And a question related to that might be for Dr. Saunders. If you know, when Osborne, when parents go through all the different steps they go through to get the laptop, isn't free and reduced part of that applica, that application, isn't that also included in there?
It has been in the past. I mean, they provided some information about it at that point in time. But I know moving forward, at least for this coming year, it will likely look a little bit different. The distribution of the devices. And that goes back to what I recognized Dr. Saunders was thinking about was the zero week, where we would be providing expectations and devices and materials and supplies to students in that first week of school. So likely, we would have some interaction with the free and reduced lunch forms and, and the processes there.
Thank you. That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Seibert. I'll make sure everybody gets a chance to ask a question if they'd like. Ms. Keeper. Okay, I'll go to my right then.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, we can hear you now. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm out, I'm out in the middle of nowhere. I can hardly see you guys, let alone hear you. So appreciate you dealing with me right now. First of all, I just wanted, on a personal note, to extend a Happy Father's Day to everybody on this call that is a father, grandfather. Y'all are amazing people, and I appreciate not only what you do, but who you are. Secondly, you know, Dr. Newman alluded to his evaluation, where I can tell you with certainty that this board just thought y'all crushed it this year. And to his point, this is a team effort, all of us on this call and beyond this call, are partners in crime in making sure we do the best by our students. I'm so very proud of each of you, and all of you are the reason why it's hard not to run again this year. So just know that, love you all, that I'm still going to be here for you no matter what. And I'm just so proud of this team this year. Becky, we're going to miss you, but we wish you the best, and we got more to say about that. Just a quick question, I think, I think the guys covered a lot of things really well that were on my mind. I guess, too, I just wanted to commend and call out Al. As a parent, the communications and all that you've had to do to, to lift us up during this, when we're all going, what the heck is going to happen? What's going on? We appreciate you, and I just wanted to call you out for that. And for all of you, I mean, academics and support services for our students are at the helm of everything we care about, and that holds true. I can tell you that without comms, without tech, without HR, without finance, the backbone of the system, you know, everybody would be in a world of hurt. So I just want to know that those, those background, you know, functions are just as important to making sure our kids get what they need and what they desire and what they deserve. So Bobby and Al, I guess the two question, you know, the same question for each of you, and it's the only question I actually have is, based on what we learned with kind of what was coming in with the virtual help desks or what we're hearing back from comms, and assuming we might go into the school year, which my assumption is maybe half and half at best, what did y'all learn in terms of the volume as kind of things went on and what you anticipate for what may come, given the reentry?
I'll start, Bobby, because I can be kind of brief. But, you know, from my perspective, it's, it's striking a balance. Because certainly there are division-level things coming from the board, coming from the superintendent, that people want to know about the direction that we're going in. But then it was also building-level communication and me trying to stay out of the way of teachers, of principals, you know, trying to do or to communicate things that were very specific to where they are. So I would say, like I mentioned, overall, the feedback that we got, I know Dr. Newman received several parent dialogues about their pleasure, you know, with what they were receiving, that they were very gracious to say, you know, we realize that this is a crazy time. We are willing to wait, you know, until you are ready to give us what you think is going to happen. We had others that were very anxious, and I'm a parent of, you know, school-aged children, one that's just graduated. But, you know, so I, I understand that perspective. And I think that's one of the joys that I can speak to about being in this division and having on our team people who are parents, people that understand. So there's empathy as we are planning, that we're not sitting here just discrediting, you know, the fact that our parents and our school community want to know what's going on. But we're looking at it from the perspective of, we have children as well, and we can identify with the things that you are wanting to know. So I think, you know, we try, we try to do as much as we can on the social media, on the text messaging, on websites, realizing that not everybody gets everything the same way. And some of these surveys that are going out will kind of reiterate, you know, an opportunity for people to tell us their preference. But even with that, even in areas where majority rules, we'll still use some of the other mediums to make sure that people are well-informed about the things that we are able to give when we can give it. Did that help at all?
And then from our standpoint, well, one, we learned we were pleasantly surprised when we got the devices back. So out of the 1,800 or so, they were in tremendously good condition. Either they weren't being used or hopefully, most likely, they were just sitting in one spot, you know, on a desk or something in the bedroom or wherever they, kitchen table, wherever they might have used it. And so they were in very good condition. I think out of 1,800, I think we only had three screen breaks, which was really good. Had a few other minor damage and things like that, but they were, they were in great condition. The majority of our communication and our, the, the trouble tickets that came in were issues logging on, trying to get into Schoology, trying to get into some of the online applications. That's typical, and most of them were from grades five and up. We had relatively few. We had a couple of hardware issues at the elementary level, switching out devices for them. But most everything was able to be remedied by a phone call or a follow-up email with the parent. Where we couldn't, we purchased a one-year license for my team to have remote access into the computers. Actually got a chance to use it with Mrs. Stevens to get, to, to fix something remotely and kind of take over that. And we implemented some protocols to where the parent had to be the one to do that. We weren't just going to barge in when a student was connected by themselves. And so the few cases we did that, that was successful. So it seemed to, our, our model seemed to work pretty well. So we're hoping, couple that with the fact that we're looking at some in-person, hopefully up, maybe up to 50%. So we may be able to see a student and the device twice a week. And so I think we'll be able to get some resolution even quicker with that fact.
I think Ms. Keeper had another question.
I did. I'm sorry. I forgot. Andy. Like, I, I would, I would be beside myself if I didn't ask you a question. So I wanted to go back to sort of Mr. Albrecht's conversation about the free and reduced lunch. And I'm sorry if I missed the data. You guys gave us a lot of good talking points. So when we compare from year to year, I get that that's sort of based on the applications that are submitted. So how does that work with this last three months? Because if I understood correctly, basically, anyone could kind of walk up, but it didn't necessarily mean that they were applying for the free and reduced lunch. Can you help me just understand what we're talking about here?
So a lot of this change didn't have anything to do with students preparing and filing free and reduced lunch applications at the school. It had to do with the number of, of their parents who were going on, receiving benefits from the government. So the SNAP program and others feed directly into our program. If you're on the SNAP program, then it feeds into, to us, and you're automatically put on the free and reduced lunch program here. I just, it's not so much that in March, we wouldn't generally be having a push for a lot of applications to come in from students. But just to show you how bad things got and how quickly they got bad, is you can see the data really jumped up. And I think primarily it was due, it, it happened during the month of March. I'm scared. I want to find the data, but I'm really a little scared to see what the data looks like in April, May and June. Because we just shut down in, in the pandemic and everything would happen around March 13th. So I anticipate the data to be much worse now than it was even back then, and it's awful then. I mean, when you have over two-thirds of your student population, several of our schools, what is it? Two of our schools, over 80% of the children in the school. One, which is, with Baldwin, is right at 80%. Almost three, three of our schools are right at 80, or 80% or over in population. So, but it mostly came from the federal government and through their data, not from receiving increased amounts of free and reduced applications from the students.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keeper. Mrs. Williams, do you have any questions?
I don't specifically have any questions because I think everything was covered. I cannot tell you how much I appreciate this forum we had this time and the way you all have. You were put forth three different questions and then how you're going to improve. And I just felt like that was amazing. And, and I, I just really appreciate that, that forum play. One thing that, that I really want to hone in on, and somehow we're going to have to make this happen from my perspective, is hiring these, hiring the two GT teachers we needed. If we needed an HVAC person and a plumbing person and a security engineer, somehow he has a board that's got to make that happen. We know it's not the time given hours. That's what I heard loudly clear today. And I just really, everything you have done throughout the years since I've been on this board, just improved from just like communication, HR, definitely technology, academics and special ed, everything is just. I'm just really impressed about everybody on this team. And I'm so thankful that this leadership is as strong as it is. And that's all I have at this point.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Stevens.
Yes. First of all, thank you, everyone, for all the hard work you've done. There's so much information that was given to us this afternoon. I don't know about anybody else, but my brain is kind of overflowing with it all. It looks like we're, we're heading together a really good plan for the fall. I do have, I have a couple of questions. I guess my first question is for Dr. Saunders. Do we have, or are we putting into place, developing a system for supporting parents with this blended learning scenario that we're likely going to go with? Because I know in speaking anecdotally with other parents in the community who have school-aged kids like I do, one of their issues was supporting their kids accessing the online platforms and then understanding the work and helping them get done with the work. So I, I did have parents reach out to me, you know, how can they better be supported?
So, yeah, I, I mean, I think that's one of our main focus areas is, you and I both have a first grader. And so I experienced firsthand what it's like to try to, you know, and I'm an educator as are, as, as are you. And so you kind of figure that it is a, it is a challenge to figure out how to navigate that, how to manage, how to work with your student at multiple levels, right? And it becomes more challenging when you hit those secondary levels where the material may, may not be something that's even vaguely familiar to a parent. You know, the, the AP chemistry or the other classes that are happening. So, yes, we are exploring a variety of different options. There are some, there are some technology supports out there and some things that I know that our, our department, both Pedro and Dr. Cramp are really looking into to see where students would maybe be able to engage in, in sort of a mentor-type relationship where they would get on-demand support to support them with anything that they might be having a challenge with in the classroom part of it. The parent part of it, we certainly have parts of our task force working around almost sort of what would a parent university look like, right? What are the kinds of tools that parents would need in order to continue to support their children in this very different environment? So, yes, they're working on it. As I've said, with almost everything that we're doing with the task force, it is a moving target. We have to be patient. We have to continue to work together and be flexible, but it is definitely on the list. And we know that the parent piece or the caregiver piece or whomever's in the home working with the child will need some supports along the way.
Thank you. Yeah, it, it's reinventing the wheel again. I kind of look at it. We had to reinvent the wheel in March, and now we're reinventing something else. And we don't have anything to look back at as models that worked in the past. This is very new, uncharted territory. My second question is for Andy. Can you share a little bit more information about this program that you're trying to, that we're trying to get involved with that allows us to purchase more local, regional foods, food products for schools?
The name of it is Favors. It's called, is F-F-A-B-O-R-S. And it's just a government program. We're, we're enrolled in it for the first time. And it's a, I, I think it's a new program for the federal government to allow us to buy more local produce and, and for all of our, all of our schools. I don't know a lot more about it than that, but I, we can, I can get you some, a lot more information about that. I'll send it to you tomorrow. Okay?
Thank you. And then you're going to share with us, once you get the data for April and May, concerning eligibility for free or reduced. You'll get that to us, I'm assuming.
Yes. Soon as we can get the data available, I will send it out. I, I talked to the Food Service Director yesterday, and she told me that I was surprised I didn't have it by today. My goal was to have it to you by tonight. But so hopefully by the end of the week, I'll be able to have that data available for you.
And then so moving into the fall, if we're doing a blended platform, serving lunch to students in school and preparing lunches to be picked up for students who are not in school, that's another layer that needs to be figured out.
Yeah, with, it's going to, I mean, amongst the many layers that we have to figure out. I mean, it's just, I can't believe all of the different things that have come up, talking about coming back to school this fall. But yes, we're going to have to have a way for the community and, and students who are not in school to be able to come by and pick up meals like we do now. We, we don't want to serve, we don't want those meals every day. Like, we want to serve them once a week, just like we do now. So I'm not sure what, if any, changes that will be made by that, since most of our students will be in school at that time. We may have a different, a different point, a different place for them to pick the meal up. We would, I don't know, we'll, we're working on that. I don't want to get too far ahead right now, because I just don't know right now. Okay?
Well, thank you. Thank you for all your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. And we won't have board comments now because we have them later on tonight at our meeting, starting at seven. I know you all probably want to get out of here and get something to eat. But I'll be brief. I only have one question that was unanswered, and that stemmed from an article I read this morning. And the question is, I guess, more toward Mrs. Wingfield. On the article I read this morning, talked about typically colleges and how some professors are kind of reticent to go back in the classroom. Have we heard new that from any of our staff or, or parents about them being reticent about going back to school in the fall?
We, our task force sent out the employee survey. It's due Friday. And those concerns were some of the questions that we've asked. So as of yesterday, we had 561 responses. And K-12 is, they're the ones who pushed out the survey, and they're going to disaggregate the data. So that's part of what the task force's job is going to do, to help identify concerns or problems and help address it. We know people are going to be scared. We're working, trying to, I'm working with Suzanne Vinegar. She's also my task force group, to try and communicate as much information before the majority of our staff comes back. We're working on protocol to let people know this is, you know, if you, if you, when you're highly exposed, this is the procedure that we're going to take. We're working on getting an affidavit so that employees will, they'll be, we're going to test them with monitoring themselves on a daily basis. Give me a second. I've got, I've got these things taped to my wall because I'm sorting through them now.
While she's looking, I will just chime in and say, the parent piece of that, we're asking those same questions on a survey that will be pushed out Thursday.
We, we've got some posters that we're going to disseminate to staff. We're gonna, you know, email them. They're gonna be on the HR website. They'll be posted at the work site. What do you do if you're exposed to Corona? Face masks, do's and don'ts. We're gonna have FAQs. Information about the paid sick leave and expanded rights and medical leave out. I talked about the protocols. We, I know we're going to need development training. Yeah, those are some of the things that we are working on getting together. I think the more information we can get and get training our resources together.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I'm sure we'll hear more about that as we go along. Before I conclude, we move on to getting a motion. Are there any of the questions or comments anybody has? I want to make sure. Left unsaid. Seeing none, I'll go across my screen. Ms. Barrett, Ms. Garza, Ms. Dr. Williams, Dr. Saunders, Mr. Hawkins, Dr. Stone, and Dr. Newman. I thank you all for your time. This has been an incredible time. You all have shown to put our students first, looked out for our staff and our colleagues, but put our students first and worked hard day and night to make sure that we did the best for them. And Mr. Albrecht mentioned this a lot of times about the computer that we didn't have. And we have it, we launched, so we launched it, we gave out. You did so much to do to better our kids in this time. You should be proud of yourself. I'm proud of you. Happy to work with you. And I'm glad that you all is a team. Sorry for losing Dr. Stone. I'd be lucky to have her in the school system. But I just want to really honestly appreciate your work and your effort and keep it up. And we're here to support you. So thank you for your time and your energy. And if there's anything we can do to help you do jobs as you go along, let us know. And that's all from me. So with that, we have our next meeting at seven, but we need to adjourn this retreat. So I will ask for a motion.
Sorry, I moved the school board's statement asses. Adjourn.
Well, I saw Ms. Seberg first, so I'll give it to her. Motion from Mrs. Maria, second from Mrs. Seberg, that the school board's statement says adjourn our retreat. And we need to do a roll call vote. So Ms. Garza?
Okay. Chairman Williams? Mrs. Kiefer?
I think she's on the phone.
She might be having, there she is. She might be having those problems she was having with audio video.
She just texted me. She can't connect, but she said, I approve.
Okay. Mrs. Maria?
Aye.
Mr. Albrecht?
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
And Mrs. Stevens?
Aye.
The ayes have it, seven, zero. And we are adjourned until seven o'clock. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. And thanks for the presentations.